Amendment to the fiscal year 2019 annual plan which covers the fiscal year 2019 capital fund grant and the five-year action plan. Federal law and the regulations in 24 CFR Part 903 require that NICA establishes one or more resident advisory boards as part of NICA's annual plan process. RAB members, membership is comprised of individuals who reflect and represent the residents assisted by public housing. The main role of the RAB is to make recommendations in the development of NICA's annual plan. In order to facilitate collaboration, NICA seeks the RAB's participation from the inception of the planning process at the beginning of the year. We are also required to request input for the RAB for any significant amendment or modification to the annual plan prior to submission to HUD. NICA's jurisdiction-wide resident council currently consists of the eight members serving on the citywide council of presidents. They represent Bronx North and South, Brooklyn East, West and South, Manhattan North, Queens, and Staten Island. There are also four additional RAB members representing two developments in Manhattan South and Section 8. The federal regulations state that if a jurisdiction-wide resident council is in place that complies with the tenant participation regulations, at 24 CFR 964, the PHA must appoint this group or its representatives as the resident advisory board. NICA has discretion in determining the method of appointment of RAB as long as a PHA ensures that its RAB reflects and represents all the residents assisted by the PHA. The current structure of NICA's RAB consists of the citywide council of presidents known as CICOP, which is NICA's jurisdiction-wide resident council. The RAB also includes the executive board members of the districts of the CICOP. The CICOP and the executive board members are all duly elected NICA Resident Association Presidents. In total, we have forty-nine advisory board members that were charged with providing recommendations on the development of the draft fiscal year 2020 annual plan and the draft fiscal year 2020 to 2024 five-year plan, as well as the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2019 annual plan. The complete list of the current 2019 RAB members can be found starting on page 235 of the draft fiscal year 2020 annual plan. For the current RAB season, NICA first met with CICOP on January 17, 2019, to establish the timeline for developing and submitting the annual plan to HUD. RAB meeting dates were established and topics were developed for the significant amendments to the 2019 annual plan and the 2020 annual plan. The first meeting with the full resident advisory board was held on February 21, 2019. As stated, NICA worked with CICOP to develop the RAB meeting schedule and topics. The first RAB meeting for this season was held on February 21, and we received RAB's final comments on the significant amendment. We also reviewed HUD's over-income policy and the RAB PAC updates. On March 7, NICA discussed the annual plan's five-year goals. April 18 was focused on a review of the capital fund grant and NICA's five-year action plan. On May 2, we provided an overview of NICA's 2.0 and discussed PACs and 100% affordable housing updates, as well as additions to the annual plan. And here we are today, at the July 18 public hearing. There will be one more RAB meeting to discuss their final comments on the draft fiscal year 2020 annual plan and the five-year plan and the significant amendments. RAB members are excellent partners to NICA during the development of the annual plan. However, due to the very large size of NICA, NICA's resident population, it may be challenging to get a good sense of everyone's perspective. NICA wants to hear from residents, and we encourage you to get involved. Join your developments resident association, be a part of the process from the beginning. RAB members are charged with reviewing the draft plans and bringing the information back to their district meetings and their development association meetings. When they come back to the RAB meetings, their comments represent you. They tell us what residents want and share their opinion on NICA's plan. Join your association, make it a representation of you, and help us expand our partnership. At this point, I would like to formally open up the public hearing. I thank you for, I think it's important for us to know the process leading up to today, so I thank you for listening to the presentation. As I mentioned earlier, on May 31, 2019, NICA released the draft fiscal year 2020 annual plan and the draft five-year plan for 2020 through 2024 for public review. NICA also released the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2019 annual plan for public review. This amendment is for the fiscal year 2019 capital plan and five-year action plan. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the draft fiscal year 2020 annual plan, the draft five-year plan, and this draft significant amendment plan. You can provide comments via fax and email, through the regular mail, or at this evening's public hearing. The draft plans and the draft significant amendment were made available for public review at NICA's principal office at 250 Broadway, on NICA's website, at each local property management office, and at four designated community and senior centers. The draft fiscal year 2020 annual plan and the draft five-year plan, as well as the draft amendment, were also sent to all resident advisory board delegates and to each resident association president. Copies of the executive summaries for the draft annual plan and the draft significant amendment are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian for review at the tables outside of the auditorium. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the draft plans, as well as the draft significant amendment. The draft plans and draft amendment are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand, however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for a verbal exchange. NICA representatives will not engage in discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to the questions. They are present to hear what you have to say about the draft plans and draft significant amendments. This public hearing is being livestreamed over the internet and will be available to view on NICA's website. Joining us tonight, we have NICA's board members Catherine Garcia, Vice Chair, Matt Giewal, member, Joseph Adams, member, Jethlyn Young, member, and we also have Chief Stevenson from the NYPD's Housing Bureau here this evening. We hope that everyone who has a comment will be able to express it this evening. Let's go over the following ground rules to make sure this event runs smoothly. If you wish to speak, first you must fill out a speaker slip. These are available at the entrance area at the table marked Speaker Sign In. Please line up at one of the microphones in the aisles and wait for your turn to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. On the stage, you will see a timer with three lights. When you begin to speak, the green light will go on and the timer will begin to count down. When the yellow light is lit, you should begin to finish your remarks. When the red light is turned on, your time at the microphone is over. You can submit written comments at the check-in table. Numbered speaker slips are non-transferable. If you are not present or do not wish to speak when your name is called or number is called, you will forfeit your opportunity to speak. The hearing is being recorded and transcribed by a stenographer, so please speak only from the microphones in the aisles. Please begin by identifying yourself and your development or affiliation. Please remember that we are here to comment on the draft plans and draft significant amendment. Demeaning, vulgar, or discriminatory language, as well as personal comments or attacks on resident representatives, public attendees, or NICA staff will not be tolerated. As moderator, I reserve the right to immediately move to the next speaker in line if I deem comments as inappropriate. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow these directions. We are here to consider issues that are of concern to everyone, not issues that concern only a single resident or individual. If you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, we have staff tables outside of this room with personnel who can take your concerns. Please complete a resident comment card at one of these tables. Distributing materials is not allowed in the auditorium. If you have leaflets or brochures you would like to hand out, please leave them at the general information station outside of this room. Resource tables offering information on programs and opportunities that may be of interest to you are also set up in the hall. In particular, we encourage you to learn more about NICA's community engagement partnerships and NICA's emergency management. Speaker number one, Nancy Ortiz from Bladic Houses. After Ms. Ortiz will be Jennifer Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Nancy Ortiz. I represent Bladic Houses. My concern is the RAB program and its policy and how it is being transferred over and brought to the attention of the residents. I think that there really needs to be more openness and more transparency and more communication relative to the RAB program. A lot of people are extremely confused, and they're very concerned that they will be losing their homes. I believe that the dialogue needs to be, there needs to be more dialogue, more transparency, more inclusion, especially when you are obtaining a management office or you have an RFP for managing agents and jobs for the residents of housing. These managing agents and thirty-two BJ, which has been in the room quite often, should be providing at least thirty to forty percent of the jobs to residents of housing. I think this is something that needs to be brought to the table. Lastly, I have a message for the new incoming chair, and it's not considered derogatory. We, New York City Housing Authority requires three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours. We cannot have a part-time person. We need a person who is going to be dedicated to the restructuring of the New York City Housing Authority. If this is not what is intended and this is not what is going to be brought to the table, then don't take the job. We need someone that's going to be effective for the residents, for the developments, and for the improvement of the New York City Housing Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Jennifer Thomas from Wise Towers.
My concern is the people of mental health and with disability. All these changes, for some reason, would affect these people. I can talk from my experience. We're having difficult time, these folks having difficult time getting even to reach out to housing. You get a runaround. I'm smelling prescription for problems, and I'm calling on representative, elected representative to do something because we can't take no more. It's very, very, very frightening to understand that some of us might lose our housing. My concern is jobs for those people and what kind of criteria and transparency for those people when coming to jobs? Because every year, they want you to have some kind of job or money or whatever. These people barely could make it in society, and this is my concern this evening. They are the voiceless, and I'm a voice for them. For years, I have been pounding the pavement, the shop floor, to every elective official, and we need to find out exactly what is happening with housing. Because like, never forget the poor people. Twenty-twenty is here, and poor people like myself and others do vote in Wise Towers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, can you see Ms. Patterson? I think she's in the back since you mentioned residents with mental health. She's gonna find, she's gonna come to you, Ms. Thomas. Next, we have Pamela Coleman from St. Nicholas.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pamela Coleman, the Vice President of St. Nicholas Houses. I have a couple of questions. What steps are you guys going to take and how long is it going to take you to handle all the black mold that's in St. Nick? There's a lot of black mold with spores coming out of it. This is horrible. These people have to inhale this smell. It's terrible. There's leaks, and all of this is coming from pipes that we need. We haven't had pipes in St. Nick in sixty years, over sixty years. This is terrible. We also have lesionella disease in St. Nick that no one is addressing. This is terrible. I have attended with me here that she's the first confirmed case of lesionella, lesionare disease. There's no reason why we still haven't gotten any, any type of information on the water. I just want to know how long is it going to take? Someone has to do something because St. Nick is falling apart while everyone else is living around St. Nick is falling apart. And I, we need your help to do something, do something.
Ms. Coleman, Brian Demmon, right behind you, will connect you with operations for your background. Karen Leader from Cooper Park, and then Ms. Robinson from St. Nicholas.
Good evening. My name is Karen Leader, and I'm a resident of Cooper Park Houses. I also serve as Secretary on the Resident Council Executive Board. I stand here today in representation of the residents of Cooper Park Houses. Once again, you, NICA, are proposing to allow a private developer to construct two hundred and fifty luxury and affordable units on one of our parking lots. Not only are you proposing to eliminate parking for residents who pay to have their cars parked in their own backyards, additionally, you aren't even ensuring us that the income range of the affordable units will actually be accessible to residents who are underutilizing their units so that they can apply for one of these affordable units and make an apartment at Cooper Park available for a new family. Residents are opposed to these infill projects as they're not meeting their intended purpose. While you're stating that the goal of Next Gen is to create revenue to invest back into our developments, we realize that you act, your actual goal is to take from the less fortunate and give to the wealthy. Sadly enough, none of your proposals is generating enough revenue to come close to fixing any capital repair problems. However, your infill projects do allow private developers to gain financially while residents are negatively impacted. The manner that you are doing your RFP ensures this. Instead of you setting a minimum dollar amount that developers need to respond to, developers are being allowed to dictate to you what they will want, what they want to lease the land for. The agreements that you are making are being made at an insignificant amount. Each of your decision-makers should know that the ground lease payments that you should be asking for should be at least three-quarters of the capital repair amount that's needed at each of the developments, along with mandated annual payments thereafter. You should respect residents enough to address our concerns and not simply check off HUD's boxes on their to-do list. Residents should be given a seat at the table when it comes to planning and the decision-making process. It should be made evident to residents that our input is included in all stages of your proposed plans. Residents must be involved when you, NICA, select campuses for new development and when the kind of new development for each site is decided. Before you begin any community engagement processes or put out an RFP for any new construction, you need to hire experts to complete a thorough environmental review, which any and all potential environmental impacts on residents and our environment will be identified.
Ms. Leader, we'll take your comments, your written comments. Thank you. Ms. Robinson, please approach the mic. Thank you. And then followed by Ms. Robinson, we have Gloria Wright.
Good afternoon. I am concerned very much about what is really going to happen and how the information, I heard what you said, but it's not really true. We need, as tenants, to have a better way of receiving the information, and since I have not had the time to look over it, I am very concerned about the plan for 2020 to, for the next five years, that some money be put in there to take a serious look at the problem developments across the city. Because there is some very much needed things to be done, like the piping that we drink water from is not clean. Something is wrong going on. And the next thing is hot, and we are not allowed to have the proper wiring for the hookup air conditioner. If you put the air conditioner on, everything else is blowed up in the department. So we need money placed there, and we need representative that is going to come back to the community and let us know what is going on. Because when you get up in age like I am, it's very annoying, it's not right, it's not fair for us to hear the news that our development is up for sale. Now, I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm asking you, ladies and gentlemen, since you represent us at NICA, please take a serious look at the poor people that fought for what we have now and is being taken away from you, us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gloria Wright, followed by Henry Cokesum.
Good evening, everybody. Please excuse me. I'm trying to go through this, and I may be off a little bit about what you all want, but I've been getting a lot of fever from my residents, and I just want to get this out. Number one, you've done some changes, it's true, but we got a lot of changes we're seeing from the last time that's not changed. The caretaking thing that we have now that's going on is not good. We don't get the house cleaned like before and be getting more rats. We might get a caretaker for two hours and he gotta go somewhere else. I don't think that's good. Anyway, that's what's going on in mind when we do get a caretaker. The scaffolding, which you keep telling us we need it up there because we need to be work done, when is the work gonna be done? I have scaffolding up there now at least six years, and nothing is done. Nobody's working on the roof, nobody's working on the brickwork. So when is that gonna be taken care of? But then still, you're going forward with something else. I appreciate you all going forward with something else, but do this work first. The scaffolding make our building look like I don't know what, and I think everybody in here that live in the house development got some scaffolding somewhere, and it's not a good thing. That brought us the rats, because a lot of us didn't have rats. On top of that, they're telling me that they can't be, can't put down glass so the rats, you know, dig up my grounds because it's not right for the rats to be, it's inhumane to the rats. I didn't know rats was people, but I guess they are. We have a lot of pipe that's still busting. Every week, somebody got a leak, and when they open the wall, the pipe is busted. Our building been there since sixty-five. That need to be fixed before you go on to the next good thing for us. So that's really all what I have to say, and I thank you all for listening, and if I was wrong in something I said, please correct me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Henry Cokesum, followed by Gail Brewer.
Yes, my name is Henry J. Cokesum. I'm the Chief President from Thurgood Marshall. When I heard the other day that RAB was coming to our development to make some changes, I was very happy about it because some changes definitely needs to be made. But also, I do know this, regardless to what kind of change we planned, unless the right people is in place, nothing is gonna happen, and this has been our problem in the past. NICA come up with good ideas, but the people who they had to execute these ideas just didn't understand the fullness of their responsibility. So I sincerely hope that this time around, that we do have the right people in place and that some changes can be made for the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cokesum. Vow President, Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer, and I thank you for this opportunity. I'm the Vow President. I represent in Manhattan, a hundred and one NICA developments, totally fifty-three thousand units for a hundred and twelve, six hundred and seven Manhattanites. And I know the citywide NICA manages eleven point six percent of all rental apartments in our city, and you provide more than four hundred thousand residents housing bigger than Berkeley, California. Over the years, I have testified, and I urge NICA leadership to adopt the recommendations put forward for the New York City Alliance to preserve public housing, permanent, affordable commitment together, or PAC, and holistic services to all residents. It's the holistic that I want to talk about. Under PAC at Section 8, only nine thousand four hundred and ninety-five units have been or are in the process of being converted to Section 8 housing under PAC. And with your two-point zero goal of converting sixty-two thousand units to Section 8 under PAC by 2028, this means NICA still has to convert another fifty thousand units. I am concerned, and I want to give an example. I reiterate my demand that NICA must contract with nonprofit developers for PAC projects. I know you haven't done it, but I strongly believe it should be nonprofit. I am heartened that the selected joint venture for the recent Manhattan PAC, RFP, included a nonprofit developer, but its base is Upper Manhattan, has no local roots on the Upper West Side, East Harlem, or Kipper Bay. You must do requirements for the development team selected for the RFP, including local nonprofits that serve the neighborhood that the community is already familiar with. These must be equity partners that can make rehab and management decisions on holistic. NICA's plan says the goal of reassessing and replacing four hundred and twenty-five elevators by 2024, replacing two hundred and ninety-six boilers by 2026, and inspecting mold, pest, lead, heat failures. But goals must be paired with action, often not lacking, often lacking. We all know that, for instance, a senior I know who lives in St. Nicholas Houses where there's plaster and lights and floor tiles and shower panel problems, everything in his unit needed repair. The superintendent came to observe the apartment, but there was no follow-up, and until we called, the repair was not done. Constituents come every single day to my office with all of the problems. Everything repairs to, the mailbox is broken. So due to these maintenance failures in the mailroom, families go without heat and mail. NICA cannot continue to ignore these residents and their problems. So this short form of communication and action leads also to the issue of summer meals program. Just so you know, we have a summer meals task force in our office, lots of agency participating, and what I want to say is, NICA did not show up to participate, even in a task force, to talk about summer meals.
Thank you.
So I wanted to say, just to finish, I look forward to working with you, but you have to do a better job of providing services, including tenant feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vow President. Rosemarie Hamid from Sewell Park, followed by Margaret Massick.
I don't need a mic. I've got a big mic. Here I have, all right, six-four dash six-six, the Land Steve Street. The same address, except six-four dash six-six and Sixth Street across from Sewell Park High School. Now guess what our building is? Storage. That's all it is, storage. Whoever bought the lot wants us off of the land. Why do they want us off of the land? Because of this, okay? You read all about transhuman- You'll read all about transhumanism. You'll read about the Tesla effects. You'll read about how Alzheimer's is caused by the aluminum that being seeped out of all those steam holes throughout the whole city, okay? We should be angry! Don't let this happen to us! This is our land and I declare it from here on in, the land of the Native Americans that were born here cause their ancestors are pissed off, okay? And to re-impact us, step back, okay? I don't think so. The Constitution does not fit you at all. You are done. Go back to where the hell you came from, alright? You weren't born here and you wanna speak against my Mac Daddy?
Ms. Hamid, please keep your comments to the plan.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I have time, do not lose my time.
You're gonna have to keep your comments to the plan, Ms. Hamid.
Oh, sorry, the plan is, that's complaining, girl. We already know it's complaining, alright? Well, you know, this is all about, this is my plan. I can guarantee you, we will all be able to build our fortress within our communities, okay? So when those suckers decide that they're gonna come here and take our land, we'll be self-sustaining, alright? Nine eleven is not gonna happen again. You will not make us disappear. What happened to all that metal, alright? It happened because of the Tesla effect. We can have free energy. We can produce it ourselves. We can light up our own light bulbs through the energy that we have from the core of our own bodies. That's what we can do. And are you paying attention? Cause I'm talking about making sure we stay alive.
Thank you, Ms. Hamid. We're gonna move on to the next speaker, Ms. Evelyn Sanchez, from Ocean Hill. Ms. Sanchez, please come to the mic. And then Margaret Masek.
Good evening, everyone. I have, uh, we visited engagement, the program that you got started. I really appreciate that program because they are the ones letting us know what's going on in housing and how we have to deal with this. I am very upset because I have an excellent manager that finally came to Ocean Hill and I'm having a very difficult time because they want to remove her. They don't give me an answer, a reason. I've been writing, we made a meeting today. They played "I'm Sorry", Bellevue. They didn't know what I was talking about. And I am very upset. So I wish that if you have these new, and this was supposed to be the Brooklyn director, please, we need better than people than that. That's what I have to really say.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Margaret Masek, followed by Heather Beck.
Yes, my name is Margaret Masek from Oceanside Far Rockaway. My comment is about communication. I think the communication between NYCHA and the residents is extremely poor to none. Because even the presentation that you were saying that residents was involved in planning and everything like that. Because even about this meeting, I didn't find this about it. I didn't find about it from NYCHA. I found about it from another agency. And a lot of times, NYCHA is doing something and we don't get the information. And if we have to rely on our resident boy to bring the information to the residents, we're not gonna get it. So we need a better way of communication to be transparent. Because you're doing all these things and it's just with just like a few people. I don't know if they're selected people or whatever the case may be, they're supposed to represent us and then we don't know anything about what happened until much later, until after the fact. We need some kinda update. And also with the Resident Association, I was a board member last year. We need even training, instead of just a cluster meeting, like some mandatory training to let them know how to work with the residents and they work for the residents and not for NYCHA. So they're here for us and a lot of them don't understand that. So when you get voted in, it shouldn't be automatic that you get voted in with no experience, no knowledge of how to function at all. So, yeah, so and also with, sometimes with the debt, with the thirty-two billion deficit from seventeen to thirty-two billion. Me personally, I think it's not true, you know? Because it's like, what are you doing rebuilding everybody a house? You know, with all that money? Because sometimes, and how much does it take to redo a wall and to paint or to floor? For even one apartment, if you was to say you're gonna do the bathroom, the this or that, it's gonna be a few thousand dollars. It's not gonna be billions and billions of dollars. And I think NYCHA needs to use what they have and do a good job with it. And then you can talk about what's left over, what you need. And like the other young lady was saying, with the cleaning, with the maintenance, the public should not be the one to tell the professionals how to do their job. We're not their supervisors. Their supervisors, their directors need to know their tasks and standards and they need to do their job effectively without being monitored by us. Thank you.
Heather Beck, followed by Albertine Albert. Is Ms. Beck here?
Ms. Beck is gone, right?
Okay, Ms. Albert?
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Yes, I'm so happy to be here today. And I think I cannot say too much because it's going to be a little critical. But I'm here to let everyone see my face. I am a lady, I'm living in my apartment and everyone keeps thinking Albertine Albert is a man. It's not a man, it is a lady. So that made me suffer for ten years where I'm living, fifteen ninety-eight. So please, I don't want to say too much detail. I just need someone to assist me to stop that situation because I'm misery for so many years and shit and fat. Even I become disabled in that situation, I still continue getting alerts for no reason. So those neighbors decided to throw me out without, I don't have no problem with them. Yeah, that's what I mean. So I need someone to see they can contact with my office, like that they can taking care. I come here three times already for the problem to taking care, the problem never taking care. My last name is Albert, my first name is Albertine. But most of the time, basically in this country, they like to call people by the last name, okay? So it's not right if I'm living in my apartment, everyone put together to throw me out. So I need a good help. I got more to say, but I don't want to say like a critical situation. Most of the time I come here, they give me people to help me. They start calling me one or two and after they don't call me no more, they drop everything. So I don't do nothing, it is terrible situation for me. So I need, thank you so much and I'm happy to see everyone. Most of the time I try to contact with the chair and talk, they want me to be email. I was starting to learn how to email like that I can't help myself. But what happened, they cheat on my phone number to pretend Albertine Albert is a man. Like Albertine Albert live in the second floor. It is a mess going on. So my building and my office, they really need to work with them and make that situation stop. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Brian Dennen is gonna take you to Brooklyn Property Management to assist you with the names. Right next to you. Marion Kennedy, followed by Yolanda Cancel.
Thank you very much.
Is Ms. Kennedy here? I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
Kennedy, come on, John is Kennedy.
Yes.
Excuse me, um, thank you for being, for right here. The rest of us, our name is Marion Kennedy, London Houses. It's a pleasure to be here with y'all finding out what's in our future. One of the things I really wanna get over is that, cause I understand it. You're getting ready to start something new and different, which is great. But I don't know what the people that y'all will be hiring, that you call professionals? Because professionals that we already have, I hope you're gonna change those. This way I won't have to have this conversation with anybody else in their future. Because what's going on, when we explain, we have a problem in our apartment, we don't get the respect that we deserve. And of course, that's because, you know, we don't pay market rent. So they just talk to us the way they wanna talk to us and tell us something that they think that we don't know. I fixed some stuff in my own apartment, but these people who were supposed to be engineers and carpenters, they don't even know how to put a door on a closet. My problem is that they're gonna bring in new people, they're gonna have to be able to communicate with the tenants. If the tenant says this is a problem here, that's a problem there. There should be no argument with the inspector or anybody who's coming in to observe the issue. I'm saying that we need, y'all need to have confident people to come in there and do the work like they're supposed to do it. I live in a building where the elevators were broken, breaking down every day. Guys, I talked to those guys in there and they said, oh, well, they didn't put the workers, they came in all day, they didn't put this in and they put that in. After they leave, elevator's still broken. So they don't know what they were doing. So we have to, so I'm saying, hey, you guys gonna spend all this money on these buildings and you're gonna hire people who have no dignity, no respect, no care and concern for the work that they're hired to do? Then you're wasting money. Just today, the floors, the floors in our building was waxed and next week or next year, that floor's gonna be taken up. Now you're spending money for nothing. You gotta pay attention where you're spending your money or who you're spending the money on. The tenants wanna have a decent apartment. We all wanna have a decent apartment. We can't get it if you have the people in there that don't know what they're doing or don't care. They're making good money, making more money than, they're making more money than some of these people who retired. Come on, let's face it. We want quality work done in these buildings. That means inside the buildings and outside. We got a swimming pool outside London Houses, on left side street and right side street. Nobody cares. The street's sinking, the buildings fall, who's gonna take the blame? Nobody.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can I ask you to see Brian Dennen right behind you? He'll connect you with property management. Ms. Cancel, Yolanda Cancel.
Good evening, my name is Yolanda Cancel. I am a Homes Tower resident and a member of the Homes Tenant Association. Now that we're on, that we're back on square one of the infill project, I welcome the opportunity to be on the resident engagement committees. Homes Development, we need a lot of help. We have many critical issues and we need a lot of repair and updates. Uh, my apartment alone, the bathroom, the drains in, the drainpipe to my bathroom are horrendous. Every time when I come home from work or school, the bathtub is filled with dirty water and filled from the other apartments. It just doesn't go down. Um, even though I keep a stopper there, the water is just disgusting. So every day before, I take a shower, every day, every morning and at night, I have to disinfect my bathtub. So, and this has been going on for like a year, so it's really disgusting. The elevators, they were just updated like two years ago and they're still constantly broken, breaking down. They rock back and forth. They stop on floors below where you hit the button, what floor you're supposed to get on. It's very problematic. The hot water is an issue as well. Uh, just last night, we didn't have any hot water. I mean, it's pretty terrible, like you come home from a long day of work or school and you can't even take a decent shower. And then it's out for like the whole night, it's not just like an hour or two, it's just out. And a lot of times they'll turn off the water like completely in the building and there won't be any kind of like really good notice. So people who are disabled and old people that don't get to go out and see any signs, they're basically screwed, you know? They don't have any water and they don't know why. And they don't complain about it or they don't make any kind of tickets about it because they just don't know how or there's a language barrier or they're pretty much fed up. So that's why I would welcome being on the new resident engagement committees because even though I am complaining about a lot of the stuff, a lot of the issues that we have at Homes, I really welcome the opportunity to work with you, to come to some resolutions on this and to get some better transparency that everyone is seeing. And also, so you can have a real voice of a tenant who actually lives there and wants to see the building improve for us and for the future as well. I mean, we don't welcome the, of course, no one really wants the building, we are in desperate need of repairs. So I'm willing to work with you to come to a good solution. So I hope you will have me on one of the committees.
Thank you, Ms. Cancel. Thank you. Danielle Carpenter Gold, followed by Osay Mullin.
Good evening, my name is Danielle Carpenter Gold. I'm a staff attorney with the Equal Neighborhoods Practice at Take Root Justice. Take Root, formerly the Community Development Project, provides legal, participatory research and policy support to strengthen the work of grassroots and community-based groups in New York City. The Equal Neighborhoods Practice focuses on ensuring that our partner organizations have a voice in the future of the places in which they live and work. We stand with our community partners who are NYCHA tenants and organizers, demanding that the development on the authority's campuses comes under the control and in the best interests of NYCHA residents. The authority's approach to development and privatization of its properties as outlined in the fiscal year 2020 draft plan is insufficient in a number of ways. First, NYCHA residents do not have adequate opportunity to participate in and influence these processes. The authority does not begin resident consultation until it's already determined where development disposition by conversion or transfer of development rights will take place. In case of infill, the authority has also been predetermining what the affordability mix of the private building will be. When decisions are made in this manner, NYCHA tenants are unable to provide meaningful input and deprived of their lawful right to advise and assist in all aspects of public housing operations. We remind you that federal law requires the authority to initiate resident consultation and environmental review prior to making the decision that infill, conversion, or transfers of development rights will occur on any particular campus. Merely including decisions that have already been made in the annual plan and merely holding tonight's hearing is not enough to comply with that obligation. Further, when the authority undertakes infill development that would require zoning change, as with the Homes infill, that zoning change must not go, uh, zipping, must go through the Uniform Land Use Review Procedure, ULE, that includes the City Council. Authority cannot evade that requirement by what it calls a quote-unquote mayoral zoning override that is unauthorized by any state or city law. Second, the authority must take steps to ensure that the development serves rather than harms the campuses and communities which it occurs. Ideally, this would be done by allowing residents to decide for themselves what construction would occur on their campuses by, for example, voting on proposed development. The authority can also promote development that benefits residents in the local community by changing bidding rules to encourage nonprofit developers, earmarking the bulk of revenue generated by new private constructions or dispositions for the campus on which the development takes place, and building in a revenue stream such as annual payments into long-term leases. Finally, the authority must continue to maintain properties slated for infill or other disposition to the habitability standard required by city and federal law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Osay Mullin, followed by Mary Mickey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Osay Mullin. I'm a resident of London Houses located I'm a resident of London Houses located in the East New York area of Brooklyn. I would like to share with you today how NITRA's REES program impacted my life. I would like to thank NITRA's Office of Resident Economic Empowerment and Sustainability, REES Program. Through this fantastic program, I was able to attain vocational training, technical skills, and certifications that positioned me in a new career with a company that provides secure employment and a ladder of advancement to grow within the company. Through NITRA's REES Program, I was able to increase my income, reduce my debt, and now I'm on my way to financial stability. I am now able to provide a better quality of life for me and my family. The REES Program connected me with great economic opportunities, hands-on vocational training through NERTA and RTA, and the construction trades such as plumbing, carpentry, and electrical. I received certifications such as ocean learning, mold awareness, scaffolding, green building certification, training, and LED safety. Training sessions such as, training sessions also included a resume building and job-ready workshops. My experience in NITRA's REES Program was an exceptional one. I was provided with assistance in building technical and professional skills that positioned me in my new career. On behalf of me and my family, thank you, NITRA.
Mary McGee? Followed by Lisa Kenner?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary McGee. I'm a resident of Fulton Houses. Today, when you opened up this meeting, you talked about the importance of Tenant Association and to be active. How about when residents are reaching out to NITRA and saying that their TA president is violating the laws in many ways in NITRA's authority? And we're asking for a full board election, and NITRA still ignores it. That's one thing. That needs to change. There's problems, rules of law, and we need to follow them. So if community operations has a big impact in this, then things need to be done. Most important, Fulton Houses was slated, when I was here back in February when you had this meeting, I mentioned that Fulton Houses was slated for two buildings being demolished, three buildings or four buildings being put up in the place of it, that we were gonna go rad, and NITRA here said, "Oh, no, 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 we don't do that. We don't demolish. We preserve while you're demolishing Fulton Houses. The residents are not going to Stanford. We will fight you to the nail." NITRA keeps saying that you're in a deficit, thirty-two billion dollars. Where's all this money for privatizing developments? Where's all this money that NITRA's gaining for selling off parking lots or leasing off parking lots? Where is that money? Why hasn't that deficit gone down? Why? Why are we still paying two billions? Where are the repairs? You have not given capital funding to Fulton Houses in so many years. Where is the money the HUD is allocating for Fulton Houses? Where is the money that residents are paying in rent to fix capital projects in Fulton Houses? Our capital needs, as for you saying, is a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. So where is the money? Why hasn't anything been fixed there? Ever since NITRA has come out and said you wanna put rad in our development, our elevators are at order in 418 West Seventeenth Street, all three at the same time, which never happened. All right? Never happened. Our water's being turned off without notice. They clean the water tanks, but yet fail to put on the hot water. Our needs are not as bad as other developments. You're playing with the wrong group, and we will fight you. Find the hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, give us our development, and we're not standing for you to demolish because you're saying you're not displacing families because you're gonna get them an apartment, a new building. You're still displacing them because they're not where they live. That's not their address. That's a new address. And you don't need three buildings for a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. Get it straight. Thank you.
Lisa Kenner? Followed by Flora Clement?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Kenner. I am the TA president at Van Dyke Houses. I've been coming to these meetings over seventeen years, and the same thing going on and on and on. But before I say anything, I just wanna say something about resident engagement cluster. I learned, and I know other people learn when they go to the cluster meetings. Because if we didn't have the cluster meetings, how would people know how to do the paperwork that is needed for NITRA? If you don't do the paperwork right, then you're gonna get your TPA money, you can't spend it. So I think cluster is very needed. At last Thursday, I go all the time. Ms. Howard may say I may miss one meeting because I had something to do. But otherwise, I think Ms. Howard's an excellent person, not because I see her all the time, but she is, because if she wasn't, you know Ms. Hudson, I'd be sending you an email. But I wanted to say that first. See, I have my great-grandson with me, and he's four years old. This is his first meeting, so he's in, he's learning. He's gonna get that.
He's gonna be a lawyer, he's gonna be a fender.
Now, one thing I wanna say about this new program with the caretakers, it stinks. That's the worst thing you ever came up with. I wish the union president who agreed on that was here, so I could tell him. Because our builders don't get clean. Now, I'm not saying my building's all that, but my building's all that, and it's filthy. Even last night, I went downstairs and cleaned the windows myself, because I lived there. Our parents taught us to take pride in where we live. But if you got people coming in at six to four-thirty, and I see them cleaning the drop sites, you got people coming in from eight to four-thirty, then you got people to come in from nine to seven-thirty, but if people near the seven-thirty, why don't see nobody working at five o'clock? The elevators, the stairwell is terrible. If the health department were coming in now, y'all all would get a fine, because it's terrible. Now, I don't know who made this decision. Excuse me, miss, you had your time to talk, and I did not say nothing to you. Give respect. That's why we can't get nowhere, because we don't respect each other. You know? We don't come together. That's why things are happening, because we don't come together. But we always try to shoot each other down. Now, when you were talking, I didn't say nothing to you, you know? So you need to be quiet.
No, no, no!
Otherwise, also, with Van Dyke Community Center, and I have told Mr. LaBelle this, the community center, kids can't even use the community center because the air conditioner's not working. You know? And see, that's one thing, when we lost the community centers, we lost a lot, because the YCD is not doing the right thing, not in Van Dyke, because it's like it's a closed society. We don't even know what's going on in the center. Nothing's posted to try to bring people in. One thing about community operation, we made it see eye to eye to everything, but we was a family. We was a family, and the family has been broken because y'all allowed the family been broken. See, I have a problem with that. And we had a brand-new center, and I know this is going across all through the city, but I know in Van Dyke, I can talk about Van Dyke. At Van Dyke, we had different things going on, but you don't even know what's going on in the place. Also, I wanna say something about, if we don't, if we don't get it right, y'all could lose your jobs. If y'all don't have no jobs, then y'all don't have no money. I understand that that's going on, but I want you to understand, I've been coming to this for seventeen years, I've been here the same thing over and over and over, and we gotta do better. Okay, we gotta have to do better than this. And, but see, I brought a four-year-old with me, because this is important, because this is my home. Whoever said that we poor, we're not poor. We low income.
Thank you, Ms. Kenner. Flora Clement, followed by Beatrice Lopez?
I'm a resident of Robert Fulton Houses, and I'm not going to recap over what Mary McGee so eloquently stated before. I'm from the same development, but I would like to tell you that nearly ninety percent of the development does not want rad, okay? They don't want private developers in there. We don't wanna lose our Section Nine. We don't want Section Eight. Section Eight can be, if the house shuts down again, if government shuts down again, the rents will not be paid, and people can lose their homes. And with developers that are very good at getting people out of their homes, they'll be susceptible to that, okay? Also, there's Section Eight freezes that happen, and it have happened. I used to work for the city, so I know how it affects people living in buildings that their subsidy is Section Eight. We are safer with Section Nine from NITRA, as it is now, public housing, not private. Rad also, what is the procedure for monitoring if rad takes over? If people do research, yeah, there's a lot of articles about how wonderful it is. If you look deeper and you do research, you'll find articles about how rad often was not monitored correctly, and as a consequence of that, many tenants were removed from their homes, okay? So, we're not safe with a private developer. That's a myth, okay? And the ones that will do better at this plan is the private developer, okay? They will make a nice packet of money. In our development, they want to build a tower. A developer would build this tower. They could tear down a park that recently was repaired for seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. It just barely was open, and they wanna tear that park down to build a tower, seventy-thirty. Seventy-thirty is gentrification. Because when you're on land that's a hundred percent low income, and all around you are high income, and you got very little land in that development to start, if you put a tower in there that's seventy-thirty, in an area that was a hundred percent low income, that thirty is gonna vanish. They're not gonna be very strong. The market, the market in that area is going to target the seventy percent, and all the prices that are higher already are gonna go up through the roof.
Thank you for your comments. Beatrice Lopez?
Good evening. I am also a tenant of Robert Fulton Houses, and I'm representing the one percent of tenants who have recently received a letter stating that now they're considered over-income housing. About a month ago, in late June, I received my lease, and my household, according to NITRA, has been identified as an over-income household, which means that in two years, because of something called HOTMA, my rent will more than double what I am currently paying. I am a single mother of two children, a Department of Education employee, a widow, and NITRA has now decided that in two years, my rent will be close to fair market value, which, if you know market rents in Chelsea, I will be paying over three-thousand-two-hundred dollars for rent. This amount will be expected of me in a development that is frequently, has no hot water, elevators that don't work, elevators that have urine and feces, repair tickets that are ignored or take longer than six months, and worse of all, overcrowding conditions such as the one I am currently in. I live in a one-bedroom apartment with my sixteen-year-old daughter and my twelve-year-old son. I have been on a waiting list to transfer to a larger unit for twelve years, but yet I will be expected to start paying fair market rent. This is unacceptable.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. If you would like to connect with somebody to learn more about HOTMA, Mr. Brown, can you take her, connect her? Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal? Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal?
Make it right, make it right, make it right, all right? No, don't tell me this stuff. Make it right, okay? Without the right, you can't do the left, okay? Lefty loosey, righty tighty. Make it right, make it right. I said what I have to say. I forgive y'all, but make it right.
You mean, Assemblymember Rosenthal?
Yes. Hi, I'm Assemblymember Linda B. Rosenthal. I represent the Sixty-seventh Assembly District, which includes the Upper West Side and Health Kitchen in Manhattan. I'd like to thank the chair and NITRA for the opportunity to comment tonight. As a stalwart advocate for public housing and its residents, I'm well aware of NITRA's thirty-two billion dollar deficit and the negative impacts this massive shortfall has had on my constituents' lives, from chronic leaks to persistent mold, dangerous lip paint, to faulty security doors, to rat infestations and other vermin. Capital and repair issues are an ongoing reality for all those who call NITRA home, and in my district, we have Amsterdam Edition, Amsterdam Houses, and Harborview Terrace. Although NITRA has put forth plans after plans, such as infill, rad, and the sale of air rights as a way to save the city's public housing stock, the city has neglected to properly engage and collaborate with affected stakeholders and residents. NITRA's ability to effectively communicate and earn the trust of its residents through transparent community engagement process is critical to the success of the city's efforts to preserve public housing. My constituents had a front-row seat during the sham community process facilitated by NITRA during an infill battle at Harborview Terrace. For years, Manhattan's Community Board, four Harborview tenants, area elected officials, and others worked to create a plan for one-hundred percent affordable building on Harborview's basketball court and parking lot. After years of negotiations, in 2017, the city finally acceded to the community's demands and promised to carry out that plan, and went so far as to issue an RFP. Little more than a year later, and with no warning to residents or input from community leaders, the city administration reneged on the deal and changed the parameters of the agreement altogether. At a heated community meeting, tenants were blindsided when the city unveiled its proposal for a sixty-foot mega-tower containing seventy percent luxury apartments. To add insult to injury, NITRA reps told a room full of tenants that new appliances, elevators, and other capital improvements would fail to materialize if tenants withheld their support for the new plan. Instilling fear into tenants is not an effective way to build consensus, nor is it any way to save a housing authority. NITRA has replicated this familiar pattern at developments across the city. For example, at Holmes Tower on Manhattan's east side, NITRA intends to defy zoning code by building a fifty-story tower as part of an infill project. Instead of adhering to the city's Uniform Land Use Review Procedure, which is a routine process, it was, NITRA was permitted through a mayoral override to bypass that critical step which is designed to ensure the community has a voice in the development process.
Assemblymember, we'll accept your written comments, please.
Okay, let me just add one more sentence. Years of financial disinvestment at all levels of government, as well as gross mismanagement and malfeasance, have led to the deterioration of public housing across the state and the country. However, if NITRA is serious about improving the lives of its residents...
May we have your written comments? We'll accept them and put them in the record.
They deserve a transparent and effective community engagement process. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Willeka. I'm the Resident Association President of Unity Plaza. I don't have very much to say, but I would like to thank you for inviting us all here to express our grievances. Fortunately, Unity Plaza, we don't have too many issues. Thanks to Mr. Brown and our manager, Mr. Gamble, and staff. We have a few kids, but they take care of it in a timely manner. I also would like to thank Ms. Jacqueline Howard, who sponsors our cluster meetings every month on a Thursday. Our president-elect in college, Ms. Howard, who conducts our monthly cluster meetings. Her dedication and tireless efforts to ensure that we, as Resident Association Presidents, have a clear understanding of all aspects of rules and regulations to assure a meaningful quality of life for all the residents of our developments. I'm sure I speak for myself and for all the resident leaders in East New York. I just would like to say, thank you and I appreciate you. And thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Cynthia Nieves from Sua Park Extension. After Ms. Nieves, we'll have Teresa Coles. Twenty-four. Is Ms. Nieves here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Nieves and I am a member of the TA Board. I want to first thank Denisea Wheeler. We are very blessed to have her. She is always there for us when we need her and always available for tenant association members. She is in charge of the cluster meetings and has been very informative. We've learned so much from those cluster meetings. She's very compassionate and cares about the work she does. We need advice on who do we contact when things are not done in a timely manner in our development. We have not been able to use our TA room for about four months. We've complained to management. Until this day, nothing has been done. And our Family Day is on August seventeen. And the response we get is that it would get done by your Family Day. And we need it now. We have mold in the TA room, there's always floods, and it should be done now. We need it now. We can't wait for our Family Day.
Ms. Nieves, Mr. Gamble is going to escort you to who you should contact. He's right behind you. Thank you. Teresa Coles.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Coles Reagan. And I'm from General Grant Houses. And my complaint is, is piggybacking off of what everybody, what most people were talking about around here. Because I live on the twenty-first floor. And when I look out my window, there's garbage.
Ms. Coles, can I interrupt you one second?
Sure.
If everyone's speaking, can please speak up louder because our interpreters are having a hard time hearing. When you speak, they need to interpret. So, just speak a little louder.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Teresa Coles Reagan and I'm from General Grant Houses. And I want to piggyback off of what some of the people were talking about. Our groundkeepers, I live on the twenty-first floor in General Grant Houses. And I look out my window and during the morning, you can see that the grounds are clean. The last couple of months, I see the whole perimeter of the building in disgust. Garbage everywhere. I had to literally come out my apartment to tell the groundkeepers when I called over to the office, to tell the manager, to tell the supervisor for the groundkeepers, to come and clean up the place. Disgusting. Garbage, I had to, they literally, I had to go over there and I couldn't speak to the manager. I told the manager I could get in touch with Michelle Obama quicker than I could get in touch with her. She refused to see me. I was on TV last March about the vagrants that are literally living on my roof landing. I've been going through this for three years, this is the fourth year. The building doors need to be locked for our security. One of our tenants, an elderly tenant, was flashed on the stairwell while the elevator was broken. That's not conducive. Our safety and our health, I was walking up the ramp, February eighteenth, in a rack half the size of my grand dog. And my grand dog is seventeen pounds of shitzu nismo. The rack was walking alongside me as if it was entering the building as opposed to like living there. Something has to be done because these buildings are deteriorating. And from, this is a subpersonal observation. And like they said, we have all these penthouses just being built around us. Is this a sign of getting us out of here by not cleaning up the area? And I mean, we do have people vandalize, yes, we do. But if you have groundkeepers who are supposed to pick up the garbage of the ground, then do your job. If it's not an ideal job for you, then leave and let somebody else do it. I wouldn't do it myself. I mean, you know, because I take pride where I live. And my motto is ugliness in your surroundings comes from ugliness of the heart. If you change your heart, your surroundings change. But we do need, we do need a little better maintenance. And the racks, there's holes in the ground that needs to be covered up. And they refuse, I have called the maintenance people and waited for them to come, to have the groundkeepers clean up the designated area where I complained that. They told me they were only commissioned to clean up certain parts where the garbage that was there for weeks still remained. They refused to pick it up. Even a maintenance man with the dead racks, flies flying around it, he's chatting and won't pick up the dead rack. It's disgusting and deplorable.
Thank you, Ms. Coles Reagan. Can you, Mr. Brown, right next to this, can escort you to someone to talk about your building? Next, we have Norma Arellis from Jacob Rees Houses. Followed by Joshua Barnett. Norma Arellis? Okay. Joshua Barnett?
Good evening. My name is Josh Barnett. I'm a union representative and delegate for Local Three Seventy-Five, DC Thirty-Seven ASME. I've also been an architect in the Design Department in NYCHA Capital Projects for the last twenty years. And I just want to say that as a housing worker and housing advocate, RAD and PAC really terrify me because this really is about the privatization of public housing. And it's happening in a context. If we look at privatization of public services, it has a track record, it has a horrible track record. Privatization hasn't worked for public transportation, hasn't worked for public education, hasn't worked for public health. What makes anybody think it's gonna work for public housing? And it even, and it's gonna have a much worse effect on the workers, we're the ones who keep housing going, and on the residents. Because if you look at the RAD and PAC regulations, there's nothing in there that requires new hires to be civil service, to be union, to be prevailing wage. There's nothing about resident hiring, there's nothing about resident training. As it is, Section Three is insufficiently enforced. And when RAD goes into effect, it's gonna mean even fewer hiring for workers in general and fewer hiring of residents. We've seen that a wave crest with houses already where a five-by-nine maintenance company was hired. And as people have said, there's no monitoring going on to make sure that that's not gonna happen in the future. We've also seen RAD increase waste within the housing authority. We've worked at projects, at developments that are now going RAD. We've worked for over a year on the renovations at Harlem River Houses, putting between four and five thousand hours on a renovation of a forty-four million dollar design that's now literally being put on the shelf because Harlem River is supposed to be going RAD. We put in more time in that on renovating, designing the renovations of the bathrooms and the kitchens at Brogellan Houses in East New York. And that also is being put on the shelf because we've heard some bureaucrat has decided that Brogellan is now gonna go RAD. With somewhere between a thirty and forty billion dollar backlog, can NYCHA really afford to waste thousands of hours and tens of thousands of dollars like that because of increased privatization? As it is, if you go on the NYCHA internet, there are over six hundred consultants with NYCHA email addresses because we continue to pay consultants more than we do pay our own workers. That kind of privatization, that kind of waste is the last thing we can afford. What's lacking here is political will. People have said, we gotta go with RAD because this is the only game in town. It's not. It's, we're a federally funded agency, but the federal government just approved a bloated military budget in history. The developers are not being taxed. Corporate profits are all time high, but then you go, corporate taxes are at all time low. The money is there, we don't have to go the profit route. If the political will is there to make the developers, the rich in the military pay their fair share. And that's the direction we need to go because we cannot afford to lose public housing, especially in New York.
Thank you, Ada Thomas. Ada Thomas, followed by Flara Woods.
Hello, I'm a tenant at Boulevard Houses and I'm also the president of Boulevard Houses. A lot of, my concerns is all of the money that we spent to have these doors put into the developments and the intercoms that we had with the old doors were working fine. Now they put in all of this monitoring stuff and nothing is working. We don't even have the right key scan to get in the buildings. The intercoms are not working, okay? The next thing is, why is it that we have to go with another organization? In order, if you've been in your apartment thirty to forty years and we can't get no repairs and we live there, in order to get some repairs, we got to go with something else to get stoves, refrigerator, floors redone that's been there since the building's been there. No piping has been changed. In the basement, the roofs have not been done. All of these things have not been done. But now, if we are being forced to accept, what do they call that new thing they're bringing in? A Section Eight. If we don't go with Section Eight, we can't get repairs, our rent is going up, and we are being forced out. Okay? The workers that we have, okay? They're talking about coming in and bringing their workers in. Some of the, a lot of these workers that are there, some of them live there, live in the developments. This is their means of income. By them working and being on our lease, our rent is being high raised higher. But now they're trying to phase them out of their jobs. That's why a lot of our workers are depressed going to work because they don't know from one day to the next if they're going to have a job, if they're going to be able to afford to pay their rent and take care of their families. Another thing is that we don't have the proper staff in management. Management does not have enough workers in the rent office to run the rent office. They're running around doing grounds jobs to figure out how to get supplies to do the work because they don't have money to even buy supplies in the development to clean the development. Now, number two is, where is all the money going that we are being charged for rent and different things in the development? If it was not for resident engagement, we would not know what is going on. We get training for resident engagement, how to deal with our tenants and our management. We need help and we need it now.
Lorraine Stevens. Followed by Yvette Jenkins. Lorraine Stevens?
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Stevens. I'm a resident, as well as I'm on the board of Boulevard Houses. First, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Howard for our cluster meetings because during those cluster meetings, we have learned so much how to run basically a business and how to do follow-ups and how to get people to hear us. We've learned how to use it on our management to get things done. And we're teaching our residents how to use it as well. And if it wasn't for resident engagement, Ms. Howard, we wouldn't know all that we know. We have problems in our development, but we are learning how to work alongside with management. When they move, we move. So, this way, we can tell our residents exactly what's happening. Example, the PAC that's coming in, if it wasn't for them meeting with the TA Board first, the residents would have not known because they would have slid on in and brought the information. But being like I said, if it wasn't for what we've learned at our cluster meetings, we would have been in the dark. Thank you.
Yvette Jenkins, followed by Robert Hall. Is Ms. Jenkins here? Okay, Mr. Hall?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I come before you in my seventeenth year as a TA president. I'm Robert Hall from Gun Hill Houses. Thank you, Mr. Coles. I come before you in my seventeenth year as a TA president and I'm very appalled at the entire, the entire community here. And that's because we preach these problems that we've had, especially when it comes to privatization. We understand the ebb and flow problem of NYCHA, the wrongdoing on both ends. And I've always prayed, I've always prayed for an answer to the problem. And I'm really hoping that we have a consent decree in June of 2018 detailed misconduct or part of NYCHA in which HUD has decided not to take over NYCHA or put NYCHA in receivership, but to monitor NYCHA to ensure its compliance of the federal law and reform its management structure and to facilitate cooperation between HUD, NYCHA, and the City of New York. Also, to remedy the deficient fiscal conditions in NYCHA properties and to reform management structure. All of these situations has previously been discussed in this room. This is urgently needed, all right? Folks, there is a monitor, a federal monitor, that is now taking over just to observe, to make sure that NYCHA's in compliance, all right? The one thing that is needed on all parties involved, and this includes everyone, is respect because this is something that we do not have, all right? Every time there's a debate, it's always a question regarding the nine-sixty-four regs. Are the residents being dictated to? Is NYCHA gonna be in compliance? This goes on and on and on again, all right? I'm really hoping that this new activity that's taking place on a federal level will be a blueprint to achieve safe and decent housing. NYCHA cannot get rid of their entire housing stock because the apparent need for low-income housing in New York City is paramount. But this executed agreement, hopefully will be remedy, will help lead residents to becoming partners in decision-making and participants at all levels. And this is what's urgently necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Shepherd. Followed by Crystal from Bayview.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish I had more pleasant things to say, as some of the other residents here have been saying how good they had it. For me, it's been the opposite, myself and my family in Bayview Houses. I've been a resident there since 2013. From 2013 until this day, I stand and speak to you. I have been going through hell. I was at the last town hall meeting here. I had two people running up to me from Section A and a person who was overseeing the manager at that place. No one has helped me, okay? They made this person flood my apartment 2015, two weeks in a row. I've lost property that have not been replaced or reimbursed to me. A flood I'm still dealing with today for damage to my property, okay? Now, they had me in court for over a year, saying I owe rent that I don't owe. Now they want to change the story that I don't owe the rent, but they put someone else's rent into my account. They subpoenaed my bank records when they could have just looked through their hard copy. I produced my bank records to them. They still subpoenaing my bank records. Why? I have no real idea. I don't owe any money, okay? They have these construction people causing so much damage to the property. They have made their office in front of my first floor apartment window. They have damaged my two air conditioners. We are asthmatic. I haven't had an air conditioner in my apartment since 2017. And they're sitting in my window, and I'm not able to use them. Management does not care. Management is a liar. They don't communicate. The Resident Association President does not work on my behalf as a resident there. I'm tired of being tired. They're trying to force me out of my apartment for no reason. They are workers. They're not owners. Stop acting like the person that's trying to do the owner's work. This is no longer, well, this is modern-day slavery. I guess that's what you would call it. They're working for someone else to help me and my family get put in the street. Why? Because they don't like us? Who's gonna, who's gonna take care of my situation? I don't want nobody come running up here and play pretend like you're gonna help me, and you have all the information that I need in the world, but you're not helping me. I've had two people come up to me at the last meeting. They haven't done anything for me. They came running over to me on that side like they were gonna help me. I haven't done anything. I'm still going through the same thing. My furniture's been packed up since 2015. For tile replacement, for paint replacement, for corking, nothing had been done. And then they sent an inspector in my apartment taking pictures and video, and saying that me and my children dirty with your apartment, but the stuff is packed up for repair. That's a court stipulation. They have not done it. They haven't done anything, and I'm still paying rent. I sent my postal money orders to my legal aid attorney's office. Can I get some help, please?
Yes, Ms. Shepherd. Mr. Demmon, please escort Ms. Shepherd. Crystal from Bayview, followed by Rosario Vega. So we're gonna need to hear from Ms. Crystal, or we can reach out to her. If you'll leave her information, we'll take it, and we'll reach out to her. We're gonna need to move on to Rosario Vega. Can we have a mic for Ms. Vega? Ms. Vega, please hold, so we can get you a microphone.
What I'm trying to say is that I spoke earlier, because Ms. Clemente could not speak, so I spoke already. I'll gladly speak some more if you want.
We can move on to the next speaker.
I thought so.
Okay, we have Christina Chase from Ravenswood.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina, and I've lived at NYCHA most of my life. So I've lived in NYCHA most of my life. Queensbridge Houses, Astoria Houses, now Ravenswood Houses. I actually started my journey here at the ACC, and now I'm a doctoral student at the Kennedy Grad Center. Well, thank you, and I am an example of public investment, right? So I stand here before you today, because we all know that NYCHA has been neglected and disinvested in, but it is still our home. Despite public perception, it's where I feel safe and secure. Without NYCHA, I would be displaced, like many of my friends and family who cannot afford to live here in New York City anymore. I was born here. I want to build my family here. I do not want to be displaced. After studying the plans for NYCHA this year and the years prior, it is clear that the future of NYCHA does not envision us as part of it. The Section Eight conversions that Rad necessitates coerces us to a position of precarity. Section Eight enhanced vouchers do not provide the same legal protections and housing stability that we currently have as public housing residents under Section Nine. For many of us, including myself, who experience increases and decreases in our income because of the labor market, and that's just the reality we endure as underemployed and unemployed folks because of systems of racism and classism, it does not have nothing to do with our worth. I stand here before you today as a person who still does not meet the requirements of the income floors that you guys, that HUD envisions to implement for public housing across the country. But it is clear that community engagement hasn't actually occurred, because it can't really happen through flyers or meetings where we're just being told what Rad actually is. It can actually happen by allowing us to make the decisions. We are the experts, not the folks that have hired, excuse me, that have been hired with degrees, but the folks who've lived here for more than twenty years, including myself and the people in this room. We don't need private management, nor the public management that has neglected us for decades. We can manage ourselves. We don't want Section Eight. We want to stay in our homes under the same legal protections we have today. I ask that y'all refuse to endorse this plan. I ask that y'all stop this effort to privatize our homes, an effort that you all know, deep down, will displace us. There have been numerous tenant testimonies and even reports of the undemocratic nature of both our tenant associations and even the Rad Plan itself. We are capable of creating our own NYCHA plan with the skills and wisdom to carry it out. Just give us a chance. Will you join us, the residents of NYCHA, in the effort to protect our homes and the future of our families? Please make clear to HUD and the city leaders that the tenants of NYCHA do not endorse this plan. Nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Anne Alves.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not even sure where to begin, because there's so much going on. I see that we have a room full of people, and the majority of the people are very unhappy with what's going on with public housing. Well, let me tell you, I'm a third generation in public housing, in Gravesend Houses in Coney Island. I am also a Hurricane Sandy survivor, okay? If I sat here and told you what happened in Coney Island during that storm, you would cry. I seen, I wasn't there. I had to evacuate and be placed into two different schools until it was safe to go home. But in that evacuation place, I seen people being, coming, coming in on busloads. I've seen elderly. I've seen disabled. I've seen people from all walks of life having to sit together and sleep alongside each other, whether they knew each other or not, no privacy whatsoever. And you know what? I didn't see any fighting. I saw people acting like human beings. But at the same time, I didn't see much happening in NYCHA. Here we are, seven years later, and finally, sometime last year, they started with renovating. Do you know that my development and every other development in Coney Island looks like a war zone? The grounds are being dug up. The playgrounds have not been fixed. Kids have nowhere to go. Thank God, I live across the street from a public park, so the kids can play a little bit. But let me tell you about everyone else. We have a community center that even before Hurricane Sandy was just sitting there idle. My management office was closed, and now we have to go to Old Wire. When we have a complaint and a problem, half the time, it doesn't get taken care of. When it does get taken care of, it gets taken care of months later, if not years. We also have vermin, mice, raccoons, opossum. All types of animals are walking around Coney Island and trying to come into the apartments, all right? But my biggest problem is, is that if you ask anybody what work is getting done, you get conflicting answers. If you ask the residents, are they happy? No. We have a lot of the walkways that are not lit. Do you know how dangerous that is? People have to walk through these walkways. People are gonna fall down steps. You name it, there's a problem. I suggest that instead of trying to sell out our homes, you start working on it. I've been with Community Voices Heard for almost seventeen years, and for at least eleven years in that, fighting this. It's time to do your job. Thank you.
Ramona Brown. Followed by Joel Gross.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ramona Brown. I am from the North Bronx, Costa Seacor Houses. Like the young woman said, I am BMCC alumni. We have a saying here, "You start here, you can go anywhere." And I used to think that was the same thing for NYCHA. I am not born into NYCHA, nor my Bronx native. I was born on One Hundred Tenth and Central West, in a decent neighborhood. So I am mortified with what I have to live in now. I have repaired my life, every mistake that I've made. I feel like I'm being penalized for being a single parent with two children. I have worked hard to get to where I'm at right now in my life, you understand? I don't like to stand here and sound like a statistic, you understand? But I, when I got into NYCHA, in 2005, that was the first apartment I ever got into my, in my life. And by 2006, I was robbed, cut towards my leg in the Bronx, because I went to work. I had scrubs on. They thought I had money, because I was from Manhattan. I left. I moved from out of there. I had another child. Trying to repair my life. I went on. I got a degree. I got another, you understand? And I asked them for a transfer from there to. I traveled from Diner Avenue all the way here, every single day with a three-year-old on my side, because I wanted to show my kids that I could do something better. I wanted my kids to be raised the same way I did, you understand? In a decent neighborhood, I have a neighborhood, I don't feel like my kids go outside, you understand? My rent, my rent has been raised to fifteen hundred dollars. Why? The people around me, they don't want to do better. They're afraid to do better. Because if they do better, then you're gonna just make the rent so high that you can't move on to anything else. I complain about stuff. My house and assistant told me verbatim. Ms. Brown, do you know you have options, right? Cards, condos, are you kidding me? Fifteen hundred dollars? Like, the, the, the drug market is, is, you, you don't know what's gonna happen today and tomorrow, you understand? So because I'm paying, my, I'm paying to live in my building two times. I'm paying thirty percent of my income out to the government. I pay twelve hundred dollars a month in taxes, and then I'm paying fifteen hundred dollars a month for rent. Groceries, medical insurance, everything. I am not playing. I can't hear, and it's so unfortunate, because the NBC's just lets me know the lack of effectiveness of these meetings. The woman said she's been here for seventeen years, so that means she's been coming here since I became an adult. You understand? It's just so unfortunate. Let me, give me the opportunity. I understand that, that NYCHA's supposed to be a separate zone. I'm not trying to live there for the rest of my life, because I too want to give another brown woman the opportunity that I have. I want her to move in, and I want to move out. But how am I supposed to go anywhere if I don't have any money left to save anything? Please stop penalizing me, because I did not get married, please. You understand what I'm saying? And it's not fair. This government is so corrupt, you understand? I go in my house, people, I have repairs otherwise, so I send tons of emails to the mayor's office. It's truly unfortunate. Do something for people, because everybody doesn't know where to start. They don't know where to get the resources. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Joel Gross. And then Roberto Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Joel Gross, TA president for Willis Plaza Houses. I would like to talk about the PAC program, what our, our developers going through now. On behalf of the residents, I would like to say thank you for NYCHA for selecting a professional, great developer, manager partners with NYCHA. And also, the residents is very happy about the rehab, like they're gonna receive new elevators, a new heating system. And also, they're extremely happy about the security, having security guards. And my developer, Willis Plaza, will receive additional six hundred cameras. That is number one priority, the safety, security by our residents. And also, would like to take, thanks our director from Brooklyn, Ellen Melania, to the transition. She's always in our development to make sure everything is running very smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto Rodriguez, and then Axio Torres.
Good evening. My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I'm from Robert Fulton Houses. And I want to thank all the people who are in defense of keeping public housing. I've been so much more eloquent than what I'm about to say, but I think that the ratification of public housing does not do anything to preserve public housing. It proposes to eliminate two low-rise buildings in my residence, Robert Fulton Houses, which are thirty-six units each. You're talking about seventy-two units of three-to-four-bedroom apartments, badly needed apartments, when you consider that the median rent in Mott Haven has jumped up fourteen percent to about one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars for families of two or three more children, or two-bedroom apartment. So we know there's a great need for these apartments. How would the destruction of these low-rise buildings preserve public housing? Doesn't make any sense. The fact is, is that NYCHA has had a long history of being neglected. If you want to give it a starting point, give it to the point where somehow New York City found itself in hock to the banks, and Big Mac was established, a municipal assistance corporation, run by a guy from Wall Street named Felix Roberta. But since then, any monies that went for many years, any taxes that were collected before, they were allocated to housing, to hospitals, to infrastructures, to public schools. Banks say, "Pay me first." That's the way it went. And during this long neglect that followed in the decades, when in the eighties, you could pick up any newspaper and say, "Wall Street was rolling in money." The country was doing great somehow. That money never found its way into the public schools, public housing, or the hospitals. All I know is, is that in 1934, the first public housing was built here in New York City during the time of the Great Economic Depression. Something a lot worse than what we have now, but it's close. 1937, the United States government followed suit with this public housing program. Again, during the Great Depression years, somehow they had the money. Tuition was free, cubing, during the Great Depression years. Somewhere in the seventies, it went by. How do you explain that? And there was supposedly more money. So obviously, something has changed. Something that has not been good, something that I see that's been planned for a long time. You know, when you look at public housing, you can see there's a great positive expression of people caring for one another that was built up. On the other hand, it's embarrassing for those who keep extolling the virtues of free enterprise and the free marketplace and capitalism, when you see such a need for public housing, because somehow the private market has not, has failed to provide. They never will. That's why we have public schools. That's why we have public hospitals. That's why we should have public housing. Because if you want to ensure a society where people are educated, well-fed, and well-housed, and they pay their rent, and they're able to maintain good employment, this is what you mean.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Axio Torres, the houses.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Axia Torres, and I'm the President of Alfred E. Smith Houses. And so, we signed off, the resident association signed off on the alliance letter that Victor Brock was giving because we kind of support. However, I have several issues about how NYCHA is handling the RAD program, how they're preparing resident associations. I do have to say that Tanisha Wheeler, who's my coordinator and for my TPA funds, has done an excellent job in terms of training resident associations in terms of what we need to do as an association. And that, for the first time with the credit card, it really works. I can go into the system, know exactly how much money, and not have to chase people around physically or on the phone or by emails to find out how much TPA funds we have for whatever functions we're having. They're complete glitches, but I think that those are things that happen and need to be corrected as you go around. The next is the annual reviews. It is a nightmare in the system. We have people now getting charged $6,000, $5,000 because you didn't submit your applications when people have submitted. That system has to be fixed or it has to be stopped until it's figured out how this is being done. As it is, we're now paying 30% of our rent. So we pay mortgage rents, and we pay taxes unless I'm like carrot hit in the White House. And so, we need to be respected as taxpayers, and people need to really understand that the people who live in NYCHA do not live for free, and we're responsible people, right? That's why we have somebody in the Supreme Court Justice of this country that came out of NYCHA. And there are hundreds of stories like hers, right? And so, we need to begin to respect. And some of the people who are dealing with us need to understand that the 9/6 War was created for a reason. Right now, I have a major issue with trees because we were never consulted from conception, which is what the 9/6 War says about how we would want things done in our development. Who better than us? Stop hiring consultants to ask us. We understand. Even though people like Joyce Sinderback think we're not sophisticated enough to understand anything, but we do understand quite clearly what our needs are, and I think that needs to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Next, we have Randall Wheeler. Can we have a hand mic up front?
Hi, yes, thank you. My name is Randall, and I live at... I live in NYCHA Apartments. And when I arrived in my home, I was shocked to see that when it rained, the roof would be just full of water and it would be leaking all over the place. And the floor was damaged, and it had never been replaced. And for three months, I was seeing rocks all over the floor. And then finally, someone in my... Came into my home to complain that it had been smelling because of garbage and cigarettes which had been thrown into the elevator. And so finally, I had to contact the police department to come and say to everyone that you cannot be smoking inside the apartment, you need to go outside. And finally, that person was removed, but that person was completely stubborn. They refused to listen. And again and again, it was complained to the landlord about that issue, and the person refused to listen, even though the rules had been explained again and again that there was no smoking in the apartment. Now, I've been living there for 29 years, and the issue is still not there. It's still not fixed. The... There is feces, and there is garbage all around the apartment on the outside, and it needs to be cleaned, and nothing is happening. You can see the holes where the rats are coming in and out, and I complained about it, but I'm hearing that nothing is being done. It doesn't matter if you complain because people just don't care. It seems like everyone's just ready to blame someone else, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler, can you escort Mr. Wheeler and the interpreter to someone in the back? Thank you. Miguel Acevedo. Followed by Tyrone Ball.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Miguel Acevedo. I am the TA President of the Board at Fulton Houses. And for the record, I want to set straight that resident engagement has made every opportunity to prove that there is an active board at Fulton Houses. I'm not here to defend the board. I'm here to speak on behalf of my presidency at Fulton Houses and to say the truth that the New York Housing Authority, for this conversion that is being spoken about at Fulton Houses, NYCHA has made every single attempt to say the truth on what needs to be done at Fulton Houses and why it needs to be done. We all know that there is no money that the federal government is giving to NYCHA. Unfortunately, we're being put in a predicament where we may have to partner with a private developer to go forward, to survive at Fulton Houses. If this does not move forward, I don't know the situation that Fulton Houses is gonna be five years from now. I've seen the mechanics at Fulton Houses. I see the elevators going out every single weekend. I get the calls at 3:00 in the morning if there's no hot water, no elevator service, or the doors are broken. And if we don't do something today, Fulton won't be around tomorrow. I feel the pain of the people that are saying that NYCHA is not doing what it needs to be done. So moving forward, what do we do? Continue to have buildings that can't stand up 10 years from now, elevators that don't work? There has to be a solution to help what's best for the New York City Housing Authority. I know many people live in fear of it going private. But truth be said, NYCHA has told us it may go private, but with a partnership with the developer. Not these lies of the people coming up here and saying that it's just gonna be private, that it's all about a private developer. NYCHA has made every single attempt to inform every single tenant at Fulton Houses what's best for the future for us. I don't appreciate a handful of people putting fear in tenants that are 87 years old, 67 years old, 90 years old, and telling them that every single building is gonna be torn down to call one of the biggest activists for Fulton Houses like Victor Brock a racist. He'll do anything for any public resident. This group is doing what it can to hurt what NYCHA is trying to do to show what's best for the future for Fulton Houses. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedo. Tyrone Ball.
We seem to be living in further crumbling infrastructure. We have biohazards that are going on. In my development, we had three cases of Legionella last year. We had test results, and we still haven't gotten the results back. We have more and more encroachment into where we live at. We're short on staff. We have all three people in the office. We're short on maintenance staff, and we're short on everything else. If NYCHA is going to manage and be a landlord, it needs to effectively make sure it's staffed and it answers to one of the needs of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Are you in connection with property management at the Borough Office? If not, we can connect you. Our final speaker, Daniel Ramirez.
He's an interpreter.
We need an interpreter.
Okay.
From Mr. Ramirez. Which language?
Spanish.
Spanish interpreter, please. Please, can you come down?
Buena noche. Mi nombre es Daniel Ramirez.
My name is Daniel Ramirez.
Fulton Houses.
Fulton Houses. My question is about the president who's been saying that the buildings are in bad condition. That is a lie. It's a lie because the buildings are in good condition? My children are disabled. They were born in Fulton Houses. They're 20 years old and they were born in projects? I don't want the buildings to be destroyed because then I have no security for my family. They were born in Manhattan. They have... They will have no place to go. They don't know the Bronx or any other... I try to get help from the president because my kids, they don't know what a bathtub is. They've been without a bathtub for 17 years. And now they want to demolish the buildings. And we are the ones that paid the taxes? Of giving 200 million for a... To build a jail, then why they don't give that money to us so we can reform the buildings? If we don't pay the rents, how is NYCHA? Where is our money going? We don't see it. We're stealing the money. Where's my security then for my kids if they're Americans? Just like you. I don't want any rent or anything. I just... We just want to live in peace. Where are you sending a 97-year-old senior? Where are they gonna leave? Disabled people that require the help of someone else. They're saying that we're gonna be transferred somewhere else in Hawaii. It's shameful to stand up in front of a microphone and talk about many lies. Thank you. I'm just finding for my family.
Thank you. Can you please see Mr. Leroy Williams behind you to answer your questions? He's right behind you. So as we conclude this evening's public hearing, let me take this opportunity to thank each one of you for your taking the time to be here and expressing yourself. Whether you spoke about your single apartment, your single building, or your entire housing development, or whether you are a NYCHA resident, board member, employee, advocate, or elected official, we are here for a common reason. 174,000 apartments, homes, that we collectively need to pay attention to, value, and preserve. I want to acknowledge you, validate you, and let you know that your voice and presence resonate. I encourage you to stay involved, and together, let's build a sense of community while we preserve homes. Thank you. Travel safely until we meet again.